All right, good evening. If everybody can stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. First on our agenda is exemplary people and we're recognizing Keith Harper, who I know is here already, so Jack, do you wanna?
Sure, you wanna join in? The board would like to recognize and congratulate Keith Harper. Keith Harper has volunteered numerous times at Chalk Hill School and the Jockey Hollow STEM Academy. As a veteran of the Marine Corps, he has given his time to speak to students about the history and significance of Veterans Day. He prepared a detailed presentation that included pictures, artifacts, and interesting anecdotes about his travels and time spent overseas in service to our country. Additionally, as the Assistant Chief Pilot for Sikorsky, in coordination with STEM staff, he has facilitated an Aviation Day for 2014 and 2018 consisting of the Sikorsky Helaventure Engineering Presentation, Wind Tunnel Demonstration, Static Display Helicopter, and the Sikorsky Aircraft Rescue Firefighters. Keith is a wonderful resource for our community, and we enjoy collaborating with him to bring engaging, experiential, hands-on STEM learning to our students. So Keith, thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Do we need one more picture of Mr. Cobbs, or are we good?
Can I grab one, too? Thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the report of the chairman. And this evening, we are acknowledging three donations that we have received from the Weller Foundation.
Nobody's here from them, are they?
Okay. So we are receiving for our robotics courses, $1,000. For our AP and Biology classes, $1,956. And I'm assuming that's 95 cents, even says nine and a dollar sign. And for the Massey Library, $2,000. Yeah, they are a great partner, and they do donate to us every year. So that is phenomenal that the Weller Foundation does that for us. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Shannon. Second, David, do you wanna talk about our one retirement in here?
Sure. Kim Green, who has served us for almost four decades as a special education teacher at Jockey Hollow, will be retiring, and we will definitely miss her. She's been a valued member of this faculty for quite a while.
Great. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports in our committees and liaisons. First up is our Massey School reps.
So, the week of the 22nd, we celebrated Spirit Week at Massey. It was a very great week. Everyone dressed up and showed their school spirit. We ended the week with an awesome pep rally run by our Spanish teacher, Joelle Castillo. And then, to continue on with the fun, we celebrated Halloween with hayrides around the Massey parking lot, thanks to our very own Dr. Greenwood. And Dennis Cooper got to sport his beautiful red tractor, which is very cool. Oh, also, the Massey Free Press came out with their first issue of the paper last week. It looks amazing, and if you would like a copy of that, you could find that in the library or the office.
This Wednesday, we will be having our mandatory forum on underage drinking for the freshmen and their parents. We have presentations from important community members addressing these very pertinent issues. On Thursday, we'll be having a half-day for parent-teacher conferences. And lastly, FBLA is hosting a fundraiser for the Bridgeport Rescue Mission, and they are requesting non-perishable donations now through November 16th.
Last week on November 1st, last Thursday, was the National Honor Society induction, and it was a great ceremony held in the Stone Barn. Around 30 Massey students were inducted. Being inducting myself, I thought it was a great ceremony, and I was glad since I sprained my ankle recently that I was able to walk without crutches. Our sports report, our girl soccer team has their first state's game this Wednesday against Farmington. I mean, Newington, my bad. Boy soccer has their state's game tomorrow against Avon, and the girls volleyball has their state's game right now at the David Strong Museum downstairs.
Great, thank you so much. Finance committee met tonight. It was a pretty short meeting. The only thing on the agenda was an insurance update, and again, we have a little bit more money in our bank account, but, you know, just a little. We're not banking on that, so we will continue to monitor that like we always do. Does anybody else have any other committee reports? Hearing none, we will move on to public participation. Anybody would like to speak? It is a three-minute time limit, and you need to state your name and address for the record.
I am Pam, we're Public Judge Shruti Vasan, and I represent...
You can come up, come up.
To the microphone.
Thank you. And Nathan, come with you.
Okay. So I'm Pam, Shruti Vasan, and this is Makela Chentil, and this is Shanu Gupta. So we represent some Indian families in Monroe. And we are asking the board officially to recognize Diwali or Diwavali as a religious holiday to where Hindus and Asian families that celebrate Diwali will be allowed to have an excused absence and also not get homework that day. The Asian-American community, specifically the Hindus, Jews, Buddhists, and Sikhs, and somebody mentioned also some Christians, asking the Board of Ed to recognize Diwali and ask that no homework be given. It's a large festival and most important holiday of the year for Hindus, similar to Christmases for Christians. Lights or diyas are lit outside to protect from darkness, and the festival is as important to Hindus' Christmas as Christians', which I mentioned. The festival marks victory of good over evil, and it's celebrated with families and friends wearing new clothes, lighting these diyas, eating festive foods, and lighting firecrackers.
She's not, okay. Hello? Yeah, you can hear me well, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So my name is Shanu Gupta, and yeah, so as a combined effort, we are trying to make sure, or like requesting from the Board of Ed that like, from last few years, we saw that our kids, they say that why we don't celebrate Diwali, or why we don't get off, we have to work hard on our homework and all that. So we can, they can officially get no homeworks. And I told my son that maybe you'll not get homework, so he was really happy about it. And he was just jumping and be happy. So, yeah, so like, this came up in our mind, like this, like we have a small WhatsApp group for Indian families in Monroe, and we are about like 40, 50 families in that group, and that's how we realized that Indian community is getting bigger in Monroe. And since we all celebrate it in a big way, just like we celebrate Christmas and we get holiday off, let's check it out if we can get something to be done for Diwali. So we, I created a presentation which we will share later on in the email to all of you, and here we came up with some bullet points. Yeah, so she mentioned three things, and the other we will discuss, yeah. So there are about like 45 Hindu families and 200 Asian families in Monroe who celebrate Diwali. And Diwali is, there are two names for this festival, Diwali and Diwavali. And that means a string of lights, or it is called Festival of Lights. Like, it has the same significance as Christmas, like the Christmas we celebrate with the lights and sweets and gifting and all that. So we have the same concept here. It's just that we worship goddess Lakshmi, and we do pray for our well-being and for a good year. And students currently don't get off, yeah, she already mentioned that we don't get off to celebrate Diwali, one of the biggest traditional holiday celebrations with their families. We would like children to be excused for being absent and ask homework for children celebrating be not given during that day. So rest, Makela will explain.
Hi, I'm Makela Chentil-Nathan. I've been living in Monroe for 11 years now. With my older one graduated, he's in college now, my little one. Even my older one said, "Mom, why didn't you try this before?" I had to, when he was in elementary school, we used to take a day off, and then we celebrated. When he moved on to middle school, we couldn't because of the homework and added work. So this, this year with my elementary school kid, he said, "Mom, you are the best mom in the world" when I said it, going to present it. So as I, as they all said, Diwali falls on September, November 7th in 2018. Even though we don't have a day off, we are going to celebrate it tomorrow. My family, because they have a holiday, my husband and myself taking a day off, celebrating it, because I, they need to know the importance of all other festivals also. The next four year, we listed it in the sheet, which is Sunday, different days. It falls on different days, since the festival is based on the Indian moon calendar. I don't think we need to list them.
The next two years, it's Saturday, October 27th, the year after that, it's Sunday, and the following year, it's a Saturday, but the, and then the years after, it falls on a weekday again. So it just changes according to the moon calendar.
So...
It's been, to talk with all of you and learn about Diwali, and as we've discussed, the, having the excused absence is not a problem. One of the things that's in the state statute is religious holidays are exempt. So they would be recorded as an absence just to ensure we know where the child is, but there's no penalty for a religious absence, so it'd be excused. So that's not a problem. And then the other thing that we do, too, is we send out our memo each year, and Mr. Cobbs sends it out, just with a reminder to staff about when the religious holidays are, so we can also understand when we should or shouldn't be giving homework for each one of the holidays and, you know, those who celebrate it.
So do we have to send a letter to the school every year?
I mean, the only thing that would be helpful is to point us in the right direction to find the dates, because they vary from year to year.
Right, yes. And this, even this year, it'll be, some families will celebrate on the 6th tomorrow, and some will celebrate on, like, a lot of families will celebrate on Wednesday.
But we give you one date, like, we're not confused with two or three dates. Like, sometimes in India with the moon calendar, they get confused, and it depends on the region.
I just Googled, and I found the dates for the next four years, so that's what I did. But it's mostly, I think, most families celebrate it on Wednesday for this year.
Government holiday. And one more thing, like, if the kids have tests that day, how it will be done for them?
Again, it wouldn't be a penalty if they're out for a religious holiday. They, they wouldn't have to take the test. They would make it up at another point in time.
Same as if they were sick.
So we would like to petition a motion, make a motion to recognize this officially.
Actually, you don't even need to.
You don't need to?
It's in state statute, so...
That's what my daughter said, you're wasting, she told me, she said, "You're wasting time. You already know that you could get a note and it'd be excused." I'm like, shit, I'm like, it's not a waste of time, we're making it official.
Not a problem. Good learning for us, and yeah, I look forward to the information you are gonna email to.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we celebrated the sweets, but I was not sure to bring the food because of the stuff. Like, we should bring that.
The food, we were welcome, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Leanne McAvoy for Colonial Drive. My neighbor had hoped to be here, but he went to Town Hall, so he might be here in the next few minutes. In August of 2018, the parents on Colonial Drive made a written request to the district for a change in bus stop due to specific safety concerns. I'm here now to put on public record to the entire Board of Ed the facts as we know them. It is our understanding that prior to 2004, the bus picked up kids on Colonial Drive. In 2004, a policy was created to prevent buses from going down cul-de-sacs. In 2006, the superintendent decided to allow the bus to pick up on Colonial Drive for safety reasons once again. The current administration has been unwilling to continue with their previous safety decision. The current position is that the town only needs to meet their own policies. They have since decided that picking up on Colonial Drive is against their policies. There are other bus stops in Monroe that go down cul-de-sacs. One specifically on Route 111, which is a state highway, and another off of Wheeler, Stonehenge Road. Last week, in the United States, five kids died waiting for the bus. 15 million cars per year go through blinking red lights. Distracted driving is at an all-time high. We are asking the town of Monroe to acknowledge and uphold their original exception and pick up kids on Colonial Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
First of all, we have just an update for you about the Monroe Courier. As you know, a couple weeks ago, the Monroe Courier closed its doors, and there was a meeting about two weeks ago with members of the community, leaders within the community, and Voices was also there, a local newspaper. And what will be occurring is Voices has had a presence in part of Monroe, but not all of Monroe, so they will be moving into the entire town, and we'll be using them more as our local paper. Matter of fact, one of the things that they had said is they're gonna start to send a reporter to our board meeting. I don't see one tonight, but hopefully that will start in future meetings. So that's a change for us. Related to that, Voices will not publish honor rolls. So we've come up with an alternative to publish our honor rolls for Jockey Hollow and for Massey. What we will be doing moving forward is post them on our websites. And then also, both Dr. Greenwood and Mr. Chicklin are gonna send out school messengers with letters to each one of the parents that have a child on honor roll. So another way that we can acknowledge everybody, and everybody receives that recognition for a job well done. So that will be a different approach, given the change in the media. And regarding our Professional Development Day tomorrow, just wanted to give you a couple highlights for that day. Our elementary schools will be focusing on a number of content areas. One of the primary pieces of their work will be with the Next Generation Science Standards tomorrow. At Jockey Hollow, included within their work, will be analyzing test data and creating intervention groups. And at the high school, a focus will be their NEAS work in subcommittees tomorrow. Our Insurance Committee met last week, and we decided collectively not to meet any longer as a whole group. We've met two times, we had very good dialogue, very good working discussions with everybody involved. And what we agreed to do is now move forward with discussions with each association. So I look forward to that work with each one of the groups, and look forward to a good solution for their members and the district as well. So we will keep you posted on that as it progresses forward. Then regarding Jockey Hollow STEM, one of the handouts that you have, and I'm gonna put this on the screen, but you don't, nobody needs to move right now, because you have this on handouts, I just wanted to get it out for the folks watching this on TV. You might recall this from previous years, and I think I included this earlier in the year. This is our projection moving forward, using this year's enrollment data for looking at our Jockey Hollow campus. So the way that this chart works is the columns show the actual enrollment within our district for each one of those grade levels. So okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all the way through grade 8. And then the rows are the total population, which I'll get to in our middle school, for each one of those years moving forward. So for example, this is our 18, 19, October 1 data for enrollment. If you look at this red box over here, that's total middle school enrollment for this year, 756 students. The approximate capacity of Jockey Hollow main campus is 700 students. So if we work down through this scenario, next year's projected enrollment at Jockey Hollow is 741. This is all middle school students, but again, we're significantly beyond the threshold for that campus, that main building by itself. Whereas in 2021, we get closer to that 700 threshold, whereas 709. And then, as you can see, in 21, in 21, 22, moving forward, we're below that 700. Now, we're gonna have to keep an eye on this moving forward, because we have picked up students the past few years, and roughly a dozen students each year, so these numbers could change. But what this is starting to look like is, within the next two to three years, we could consider as an option, moving all students into the main campus at Jockey Hollow. So related to that, what I'm proposing to the board tonight is two things. One is to inform current 5th grade parents of this possibility when their children get into the 7th and 8th grade. So 5th grade parents who have a child that's considering STEM for next year, you'll see a draft letter that I've given you, just letting them know that we're exploring all options related to our middle school programming campuses, and that this possibility exists. It makes it very clear that no decision has been made at this point, but it's one possibility we could consider. So that's one piece of this. The second piece is, I'd like to put together a committee to study all these options for middle school programming, and the committee would include Central Office Administration, it would include all of the middle school administration, it would include a few SILs, it would include two parents from Jockey Hollow Main, two parents from Jockey Hollow STEM, two teachers from Jockey Hollow Main, two parents from Jockey Hollow STEM. So it's inclusive of all stakeholders related to this decision. We work through the year, so we're staying way ahead of this decision, and we have time to really explore all the options, and ultimately come to the point where we can make a recommendation to the Board of Ed after we've looked at all those options. And while we're doing that work, keep all the parents informed about what options we're considering, and get their feedback about what direction we'll go. So that was an important piece that I wanted to keep the board informed about, and see if you had any feedback on that. But in order to stay way out in front of this, we thought it would be prudent to get this letter out to parents, just letting them know of that possibility, and inform the study committee to really look at all aspects of programming moving forward. Any questions on that at all?
No, not a question, just a statement. I think that's, that's a well thought-out plan, and I appreciate that. I think that's great.
Thank you.
And, not to get too steps ahead, but how does that impact Massey if we end up moving STEM back to Jockey?
Yeah, good question. Back when we did the ad hoc study, the recommendation at that time was, if we reached a point when STEM moved back to the main campus, what that would allow us to do is to move Central Office out of Monroe L and into the STEM area, which would do a few things for us. One of the things we're always looking for is training spaces. It's very, very hard to find spaces while we're in session. If you've been here for the security committees and other committees, Curriculum Council and other committees that we have in this space, we're doing that while there's instruction occurring in the library, and it's tough on everybody. We could end up with a dedicated space for that committee work on that side of the building, as well as Central Office space. And the other nice thing about that is it keeps Central Office Administration in close proximity to the high school administration, which Dr. Greenwood would love. But there are real benefits there in terms of ongoing collaboration, communication, and then being able to consider moving the Alt Ed out of the rental space, which would save us $50,000 a year. So a lot of, a lot of potential benefits by looking at that.
Okay.
Any other questions? So, related to that, are there board members that would be willing to serve on that committee? Christine?
And Jessica.
Christine and Jessica, great.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. And then also, related to our collaborative efforts, another committee that I wanted to share with you, our workshop that we had on the Goals and Action Plan, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, was wonderful collaborative work. I was at a superintendent's meeting last week, and the dialogue amongst the superintendents in Southern Fairfield County was about collaboration with boards of ed. We were the only district where the full Board of Ed was collaborating with the full administrative team. And I think it says a lot about the culture of our shared work together in this district.
The only one? I'm sorry.
We were the only one. There are other, at this point, there are other districts who will have one or two board members working on a subcommittee of some sort, but having a full Board of Ed working with the full administrative team, we were the only one doing that. And I think it's a great statement about our work together. As board members, your, your role is to give us the wishes of the community. And as educators, we're here to be able to fulfill that vision through our knowledge of educational pedagogy. So what better way to merge those skills and talents together than truly working together? So related to that, Donna and I were talking a little bit about an induction process. This year, we don't have elections for board members tomorrow, which is a great thing, but a year from now, we'll have election for board members. And over time, we're gonna have some changes, but if we stay way ahead of this, and we design an induction process that gives board members, you know, a comprehensive understanding of the kinds of things we do, there could be real benefit here. And especially if it's one that's a collaborative process between administration and board members in the way that we deliver it. So what I wanted to ask the board tonight is if you like that idea. And then related to it, if there would be a few individuals who'd be interested in serving on that. Donna's chair, if you'd do that. And then, if there are other members who'd be interested to work with administration designing this, this would be a long-term project, there wouldn't be a lot of time pressure, but between now and next year, we'd have something put together on this regard. Donna and George? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else for Jack? All right, we will move on to our presentations, and we're gonna go over the Goals and Action Plans, and the final, everybody should have in front of them, their final Goals and Action Plan packet. This includes some of the changes that was made after the meeting last Monday, so do you wanna?
Sure. So with this one, this one is a presentation file. And what I wanted to do tonight is, the board and all the administration teams have seen this numerous times. But what I was hoping to do is get an overview of this for the public, so that this is memorialized in our video, and those that watch it on TV can see the work that was done. And if there were questions about any changes we still need to make, those could be presented, too, and we could bring this, this project to closure. So just to review the things that we've done in creating this document, we looked at research, we had a process that we employed throughout, and then ultimately, we have the product that we'll be looking at tonight. So related to the research, we looked at three primary documents. We looked at our past Goals and Action Plan from 2015 to 18. We looked at the new standards for NEAS, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, so that directly related to the work that the high school will be doing tomorrow and doing moving forward into the coming years. And then we also looked at the Public Education Leadership Project from Harvard University. So those were three primary sources, resources that we used within this work. Our organizational model, first thing that we had done is the board considered four different mission statements, and we worked with those to ultimately revise that into our current mission statement, which we'll be looking at in a minute. We looked at our goals in terms of what we want to achieve. We then craft, crafted belief statements. Why are we pursuing these ends, to test out whether or not they are really of high value to us. And then, we worked on objectives, which are the how we are going to get to our goals and our mission. And then, most recently, we worked on action planning, which is very small, very specific steps that we'll be taking, leading towards these higher-end aspirations. And related to that, the low end of this is specifically measurable. Mission side of this is aspirational. The short term here is our action planning, and the long term is the mission. So that's our overall model that we had used to create this document. One example here that we've looked at, and board members, I did correct this, this now has the new mission statement, and this is on our website as well. And our newly revised mission statement is, the mission of the Monroe Public Schools is to create a student-centered environment where all learners maximize their intellectual, creative, social, emotional, and physical potential. So that's what we had crafted. Related to our goals, here's one example. In learning supports, the Monroe Public Schools will provide learning supports that meet the varied and specific needs of learners academically and socially. So that's the what, is an example. The why, the why is, we believe that effective curriculum and instruction meets the varied and specific needs and talents of all ner, of all learners. And then lastly, the how, the objective, is to analyze, develop, analyze data to develop, monitor, and adjust strategies and resources to meet each learner's needs. So that's the overall process that we use to develop this whole document. The means for doing this was collaboration, having the full board together with the full administrative team multiple times. We had teachers involved in this work at earlier points in this, so we were looking to get that feedback from multiple stakeholders, so that this was most representative of our school community. And then what it produced was the new mission statement, the new action plan that we have before us tonight. And the goals, which I'll just quickly go through with everyone, I know, forgive me for the redundancy for board members and admin, but for our community, these were the big areas, the big ideas that we found, we wanted to organize our work moving forward. So first one is learning culture. The Monroe Public Schools will foster a culture where shared values and responsibility to create personalized and relevant learning experiences that engage all. And then the next goal is learning supports. The Monroe Public Schools will provide learning supports that meet the varied and specific needs of learners. And we had learning resources, which are the hard goods that we use. The Monroe Public Schools will provide the necessary resources to meet the needs of all learners. And lastly, community building. The Monroe School District will collaborate and communicate with the community on an ongoing basis. And the way that this all looks from a graphic standpoint is that the center of all this work is student learning and we were very conscious in using the term student. Every single one of us in this room is a student. We never stopped being a student and we felt it was important that we treated all of us in that way. I'm continuing to learn, every board member is, every staff member, every student, no matter what age, we're all continuous learners. And the more that we're growing, the more that we'll do for students. So as staff, we continue to grow in our professional understanding, the better we're gonna serve children. The more children grow, uh the the better they're served. So it's a universal element of this plan. And then all of the other circles around here support the student at the center, our learning culture, learning resources and learning supports. And then around that is the very important part of community. And the three Cs here, our community at large, the communication that we have to deliver on an ongoing basis with our community members, and even more importantly, communication is not a one-way street where we're just sharing out, but it's the collaborative dialogue with others about the work that we need to do. So that's the way we pulled all of this together into one document and one set of resources that will guide us for the next three years. Any questions or comments? The edits that we had talked about last night, like um Donna's uh change, we'd gotten in there, Dave's change, we've gotten in there, hopefully the language looks good to both of you.
Language looks perfect.
And then the edit that was in one of the goals, we'd gotten through that, and then Mike went through and he looked at all the mechanics and all the grammar to see that things were clean. So hopefully, there's no last-minute edits, but if there are, please let us know and we'll we'll make further changes. Some of them are?
Yeah.
My apologies. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to old business. Um up first, item A is our curriculum resources, the instructional materials and resource proposals um that we reviewed last time for um our French courses and our Spanish courses. So do I have a motion to approve curriculum resources, instructional material and resource for French four, curriculum resources, instructional material and resource for Spanish four and five as presented? Thank you, Jerry, do I have a second? George, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Do we have discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item B, which is policies, and we have a second review and vote anticipated on four policies, that is fifty-one forty-one point four, reporting of child abuse, neglect and sexual assault. Sixty-one forty-two, basic instructional program. Thirty-five twenty point one-three, student data protection and privacy cloud-based issues. And sixty-one forty-one point three twenty-one, which is acceptable use. Do I have a motion to approve those four policies as accepted?
Some of them.
Thank you, second David, do I have discussion on these?
Just that Mr. Cobbs is already paying dividends and then he's putting links into the agenda.
I know!
The actual policy.
That is excellent.
It's because he's a learner.
All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. We have no new business, so is there anything else this evening?
I have one little thing. When we were talking about the honor roll not being in the Monroe Courier and putting it on the website and the Monroe Public Schools Facebook page, and if could we put a link there? Is that a good idea to put that? It's more of a question than a statement. Is it a good idea to put a link?
Yeah, no problem. We could put it both on Facebook and on our Twitter feeds too.
Okay.
We could do both.
Okay.
Yeah. If, gentlemen, if you would just think to forward me the link as we get there. Yeah.
If that was a good idea, was my guess, okay.
Yeah.
We, I mean, everything else has always been links that you could go in on Facebook and see it.
Really?
Like the Courier would put a link and you'd click into it and then you would see the like the list.
I think if it were on Facebook and Twitter, then people would think to go look to the and see it.
Yeah, we could put a direct link to it so there wouldn't be any more clicks.
Okay, great. That was it.
Yes.
Jack, I just wanted to thank you and all the administration for including us and the cooperation for the goal and action plan. It was a great evening. Um there's there's buy-in when we're involved with the administration. We get to, you know, meet you and and talk, we get to know everybody a lot better and understand um the thinking and the methodology, so just a thank you from from all of us that were there. It was a good evening.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Yeah, we really enjoyed the discussion with all of you, it was wonderful. Thank you.
There's a great collaboration, thank you David for bringing that up. All right, we will move on to adjournments, I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you David and Jerry. All in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Good evening, everybody.